Screw around. Do this. Okay. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we get some public hearings tonight. Presentations. Ted Morley from the Davis Trust.
My name is Ted Morley, and this is David Sebold. We're both members of the Davis Trust. It's been a number of years since we've talked to you, and some of you may not even know who we are. The Davis Trust is a quasi-municipal group that was endowed by Lloyd Davis back in the 1980s with the goal of restoring the ale life run in the Madomic River. At that point, there was still a mill blocking, a dam still blocking the river on Mill Street, and the initial efforts involved stocking the river. A big flood in eighty-seven washed out that dam on Mill Street, and that was the last fixed obstruction for the fish getting up to the Adonic Pond. The group has had various projects through the years. There's been a blasted fishway placed at the upper falls and then subsequently in the lower falls. And now working towards improving access to Store Pond and ultimately the Holy Grail of Washington Pond. Things that we have going on currently, we're in the process of applying for a grant to replace some hanging culverts on Noise Road. It's a private section of the road, so we're doing that. Having some trouble getting permission from one of the landowners, and that grant application may not be completed. We may get stuck on that. Every spring, we try to help them get through that culvert with sandbags and maintain the stream that's getting at Store Pond. The biggest activity's been in Washington. We have a couple new members from Washington that have been high-energy and contributed a great deal to the project. There are three fixed obstructions between the river and Washington Pond. One is the outlet of the pond itself, and we've had multiple meetings with the Washington Lakes Association. And they're in favor of helping fish passage, but don't change the water level of our pond, thank you very much. We were all set to have a visit from a federal engineer to certify that our plans wouldn't affect the level of the pond, and then the pandemic hit. And there've been no visits from the engineer who's based in Massachusetts. That will happen eventually, but there's no real timetable for that. The other is a little fire dam where this Madomic Cross is under two-twenty, right in the center of the village. And we've been able to get permission from the town of Washington to have that removed, and we're negotiating the permitting process to take that dam out. So I think those two obstacles are, we can deal with those. The third is a privately-held stone dam on Spray Road. And we've been working with that landowner for fifteen years. And our last conversation went something along the lines, "Don't ever talk to me again about this." So we're waiting for him to die. There needs to be a change in ownership for us to make any practice there. We do know that the fish have free access to where the Brook crosses Route Seventeen. And we're continuing to survey north of there. We had hoped to be able to, Washington Pond had been stocked up until this past year. They stopped stocking it. We'd hoped that we could transfer fish around the obstructions, but if we do that, they'll stop the stocking. So we just have to be patient with that. So progress is slow, but there is some progress. We've had some infusion of new members. David and Chuck Delory, who lives on Mill Street, have been a welcome addition of new energy and new insight. Brian Alves from Washington's been very, very helpful, and Charlotte Henderson is still probing away. So we hope to have good news about the little dam in Washington. Maybe a miracle will happen on Noise Road.
Is there anything we can do to help perhaps with that?
No, I don't think so. The landowner is an absentee landowner. She lives in Philadelphia, so communication has been difficult.
Oh, is that, oh, so she's not opposed? We just can't get in touch with her?
Well, she is opposed. We would find, she didn't respond for the longest time, so we lost a lot of time. The grant application deadline is October first, so we're running out of time. She's concerned that increasing the capacity of the culverts will flood her land downstream. There was a site visit made by the state environmental engineer on Friday. He looked the things over and said there's no way that there's a bona fide issue for her concerns.
Do you think it might be helpful if maybe somebody who speaks her language talks to her?
Well, David has, can speak to that. He's been in more communication with her, but I think she needs facts and authority.
She's spoken her piece, and she is, she wants to look into it personally, and she expressed a desire to hire her own people to look into it.
It's just, we share, she has a summer home where I used to live, so I thought maybe it would be helpful if I chatted about it.
She seems pretty determined to see it her way.
Yeah, we do. It's where we're from. Sometimes we don't, we don't, we don't assimilate well.
Thinking long-term is what we need to do. We hope that at least at the end of this, even if it doesn't happen in time, we can get her permission and cooperation.
I would think.
When the next opportunity comes around, we'll have all our ducks in a row.
What about fish counting? Have you guys done any of that?
Not for over ten years. We did it for three or four years in a row. With the help of a shared AmeriCorps volunteer, we shared that with the land trust. The value of that is that you need to have population data for five years or more to prove to the state that the run is steady and reliable and sustainable before you can consider any harvest. The numbers are small. The years that we did do the count, the highest year we ever had was one hundred and ten thousand fish, and the lowest was fifty thousand fish. And those counts are probably completely unreliable, because when the river rose, water levels go up, we had to pull the counting station out or wash away. So there were blocks of time in the runs where we weren't counting.
So it could potentially be more than that that comes up through?
There absolutely could be. Probably are, but how many, we don't know. Just, the thing that we found back then was ale lives take three, four years to get, to come back after they, after they first are.
I think it's something like that.
Three or four years.
So it takes, there are cohorts of fish that come every year that are from different generations. The advantage of that for the ale life is that if they have a bad water level year in the spring, and one year is not successful in breeding, then there's another one coming along the next year. It seemed like there was wild fluctuations from year to year in the numbers. And in an undisturbed population of ale lives, they come back and breed two or even three times. We're not finding that now. The expectation is that they're probably getting caught in the Gulf and don't have a chance to breed a second time. We don't really know. But the reality is that we have one shot for them to breed. They're not coming back multiple years, except for very small ones. So the current population was support a very small harvest if it was proven to be sustainable. If we can open up Washington Pond, that would double the breeding population.
Probably more than that, isn't it? More than that, isn't it?
That's a hundred and twenty percent or something.
Yeah, it's, it's quite significant, I thought. It was more than
Ah, I've got my glasses on here.
Big Madomic and Little Madomic put together.
Put together, currently, we have five hundred and sixty-five acres of spawning habitat, and Washington Pond alone is eight hundred, is I'm sorry, three hundred and fourteen, and Washington Pond is five sixty-five.
Yeah, it's almost double, so, yeah, almost double what you have now.
So I think we will get there eventually. I'm not, you know, you could put in, I talked to the selectmen about doing a count a few years ago, and we discussed what it would take. Probably, well, the counting station is defunct. The net that we used ten years ago is no good, so there'd probably be an initial investment of five or seven thousand dollars, and probably a couple thousand dollars a year to continue to count on an ongoing basis. That could be, that could be started at any time, but it would require some financial support from the town. Our resources, we can only spend the interest on our endowment. We can't spend the principal, so.
Maybe we can find some grants, grants to do that.
Yeah, we can also talk to Midcoast Conservancy. Good source for volunteers.
Yeah. I guess you need to decide whether you're ready to act on that.
I think we should get things in motion for next year.
If the numbers are the same as they have been, do you know what the current price of season for ale lives was?
Six eleven P M.
I think they were getting almost thirty dollars a bushel.
Okay. I ran some estimates at thirty-five.
It may be thirty-five now. A friend of mine have a Silver in Warren. I never bothered to ask him.
Yeah, well, my numbers are old, but apparently they're still fairly good. And you can only harvest four days out of seven, so that's fifty-seven percent. I figure, there's something called the carrying capacity, which is how many fish you expect a certain acreage of pond to support. It allows you to estimate what the population should be. And that comes down to a revenue of twelve thousand dollars. So I'm not sure it's worth it at this point. If we get Washington opened up, then you're talking about a much bigger number. It probably would be worth it. You know, you'd be spending three thousand dollars a year to potentially get twelve thousand dollars worth of fish. Much of that would go to the fish agent. There's not much left. I don't know what the market for bait is. People can generally get it if they're willing to drive, right?
Oh, yeah, they, there was guys coming from all over down east, coming to Warren to pick up. I mean, they just, they don't get them like they do down in Warren, per se. It's one of the best.
Preferred bait, too.
What's that?
It's a preferred bait.
In the spring it is. In the spring it is. It's preferred bait.
So it is possible to lay the groundwork. There's no guarantee that the state would authorize it after you do that, after the election, but that's the first step.
Yep.
If you want to move in that direction.
I think that's, we need that data. Regardless, we need that data even to even really move forward, regardless of what we do elsewhere.
It would be helpful.
Yes. I mean, if we don't have the fish, then putting all this extra effort in may not be as fruitful as we would think.
Well, the extra effort's aimed at increasing the number of fish.
Right, right. And in Warren, they had, I believe last year, they had some seven- and eight-year-olds that come up through there.
They do?
Yep.
There goes my Gulf of Maine theory.
Yep, yep. They have some seven- and eight-year-olds that go up through there at times. Yep.
How large was their run this year, Dana?
I just asked.
You asked Dana?
No, I asked Tanya to get the information, because she has that ability.
Yep, they had, they had an average year over there. It wasn't a super year, but it was an average year. Everybody that came in got.
Like a million fish, right?
Yep. Not exactly sure how many come up through there. I know they catch somewhere around three to four thousand bushel. So.
And I think it's two hundred.
It's a hundred and twenty fish.
That's a lot of fish.
Yep.
You know, our run is limited by the size of the watershed.
Right.
It's not the St. George watershed. It's not the Amescada Lakes. It's always going to be small. The question is whether it will be stable.
Right.
Yep.
A friend of mine has a, has a place in Dresden that also he harvests. He says a lot of times, if there's obstructions, the ale lives will just turn around and go someplace else. Now, ale lives could be going to Warren for all we know. They typically would come back to a, to a place where they were born, but.
I've heard from another source that they breed where they are if they get stopped.
Yep.
And they're not in a good location.
Yep.
Those eggs are largely lost.
Because he has to, he has to clean out dams all the time, you know, beaver dams, so that fish can get up through. He says if they hit those, they'll just turn around and leave.
Yeah.
And he has good years, and he had bad years. That's usually the reason why.
There almost certainly are multiple beaver dams above Route Seventeen.
Yep.
And if that's the case, when there are fish, I don't know how we'll deal with those. We don't have the manpower to tear them out every day.
Yep.
Yeah, we've been taking out some beaver dams for the shellfish committee. One thing that we do need to do is, the Davis Trust is appointed by the select board. If you, can you just give me the membership again? I should have written it down when you said that. That way I can make it all official, and we'll have an updated list.
Starting in Washington, Charlotte Henderson. Brian Alves, A L B E S. In Waldeboro, Sam Chapman, who hasn't been active lately, but is still on the board. David Sebold, S E Y V O L D. Chuck Delory, D E L O R Y. Thyself.
Yes.
Who did this?
You have six.
Ted Worcester is kind of an honorary member at this point, not able to participate. Our bylaws in the original charter envisioned a watershed-wide involvement. We don't have a member from Friendship currently. We don't have a member from Bremen currently. There's not much going on down there as far as the projects go, so we haven't made a big issue of it.
There is a gentleman.
If you wanted to comply with that completely, then I think probably a letter from this office to the.
There is a gentleman who has, got involved with Midcoast Conservancy, a former lobsterman from Bremen, who, we met him at that water testing.
That's Richard.
Richard.
Nelson. Nelson?
Yes.
He's from Friendship.
Oh, okay, Richard. Okay, I thought he was from Bremen.
Ricky Nelson, Matherham.
Okay. I thought that he might be interesting, because I know he's very involved now in Midcoast. Okay.
Larry Reed is interested.
Yep.
We've contacted him. He's in the email loop when we do have communications. Membership has been offered him. I think he's going to stay informal for now, I think.
He's part, he's part of the one in Warren as well, so he's got quite a bit of information background in it.
He's an asset, for sure.
Absolutely. You know, and his uncle that runs it's been there for just twenty-five, thirty years now, at least, so.
So we do have those, those two towns aren't represented, but we haven't really made an issue about it since there wasn't a whole lot of interest. And we don't have any active plans for that part of the watershed, anyway.
Excellent.
Cool.
Anything else, David?
No, I think that's it.
So board, any, have any questions?
Just one.
Go ahead, Bob.
So how do you figure out how old an ale life is, based on weight or is there something else?
Scale it. You scale it.
You scale it, okay.
They can tell by the scales.
Like rings on a tree.
And I believe Larry did scaling, and did Sam as well? I know he asked.
There was confusion about that. Larry did it, Sam did not, and Larry will do it going forward.
As long as it's done?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Now, probably the results haven't been given to anybody.
They haven't been communicated to me, anyway.
Yep. Is Mike Brown still ahead of doing that?
I believe so.
Bob, you asked a great question, because when I was sent up to go to the first ale life meeting, I'm sitting there, and they're talking about how the, you know, you got to scale the ale lives. So I texted a select board member, and I said, "So they put the fish on the little scale? Like, they must have a really tiny scale the way." I didn't realize they were taking samples. The response was pretty funny. But, yeah, I, it didn't, it didn't occur, it wasn't making sense, and I was so glad that I didn't ask that question out loud, and I just asked Abden, because otherwise I would have been really embarrassed in front of like two hundred people.
Well, I'm going to embarrass myself. How do you do it?
Good question. I believe they just peel a couple scales off and put them on a little piece of plastic, plastic. I don't know if it folds together and holds them there, or.
Yes, it does.
Like wax paper, I think.
Yeah.
They fold it up neatly. They actually, they can use just a dull implement and rake off a few of the scales and then put them in that envelope.
And then they look at it on the microscope.
Excuse me?
How do you tell the age?
By counting the rings in the scale.
Oh, just like a tree?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Okay. I guess I missed that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's interesting.
I didn't know you could count the scales of the rings in a scale of fish either, so.
Beats way in them.
So anybody get any else, any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you so much for coming out. Thank you. Giving us an update.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to add you to the rotating schedule of committees.
Thank you for your interest.
And we'll also put you on the website, since you're one of our committees.
Yeah. And maybe we can stop looking for grants to possibly do some of this stuff.
Well, absolutely. The two areas would be, I'm not optimistic that the Noise Road thing is going to work out this year. That's a complicated issue, because it's a private road, not a town road, so the grant actually has to happen. Well, we've been able to work out a way to be, have the resident have signed the paperwork, and we do all the legwork leading up to that. So if you find something for a private resident, we have a way to work around that. And then, of course, the population stuff.
But they, they're still allowing you to put sandbags and stuff like that up there to?
Yeah.
Do you have to take them out, have to take the sandbags out after the run, or?
Well, it's gotten simpler as time goes on. It used to be that we tried to raise the pool below, below the culverts with sandbags, and that required many, many sandbags to do that.
Is the Brook that big?
Well, it's twelve feet across, the screen bed. Now the bank is so undercut and eroded that we can't seal it off anyway. So now we're just building a little sandbag fish ladder, but it's, it's like they're trying to swim up a fire hose. It's, it's only about a half of them make it.
That's too bad.
There's a significant run in Store Pond, but it could be much better than it is.
Yep.
Cool, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was really interesting.
I just have one question before we go on, Washington Pond.
Yep.
When you say you, you need to open it up, does that mean it's, it's not open up to the rivers for the?
It is, but there's a big, there's like, it's almost like a beaver dam. There's an, there's an old dam there, if I remember right. And it's blocked off on the Washington Pond, the outlet.
The outlet has a relatively simple dam. It's basically just steel high beams.
Oh.
It's only raising the water two and a half, two feet, maybe. And then the spillway is very long and gradual, and it's a metal surface. A fish ladder there would be extremely easy to do. That's really not an issue after we get permission from the lake owners to touch the dam. It's the big stone privately-held dam that we're stuck on.
Okay.
And that's eight feet high, so there's no get around that.
Wow.
You can't look for grants for a fish ladder when the obvious answer's to take the dam out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you, guys. Everyone else up? Move along. The Richard Lash?
Silver Fox.
My voice is a little raspy. I have a cyst on my vocal cord. It's been there for a couple months. Now they're treating it. I'll start in with COVID- nineteen. When that started, we found that our call volume throughout the first couple of months, we dropped down about one hundred and ten calls. People weren't going to the hospital. People weren't calling us. But we did find what was happening, that when people did call us, they was a lot sicker, and some waited too long before they called us. I can remember going to Jefferson to an elderly lady's home, and she was sick. She needed to go. But she took me by the arm, and she said, "You sure it's safe for me to go to the hospital?" And I kind of had explained to her the situation she was in, the risk, she needed to take the risk and go. But I said, "There's a lot of things in place, so that you should be safe," and she made out fine. After a couple of months, two and a half months, we found that the calls started picking up again, and actually it kind of went the other way. People started calling us for everything. We've only had, that we know of, one documented case in Waldeboro that we know of. And the CDC notifies us, as well as Maine EMS notifies us, if, if any of our crews are exposed in any way. So, and I've only received that call once, and that was way back at the beginning. So a lot of my time has been taken up with Zoom meetings, with the CDC, with Maine EMS, with the hospitals, Miles, Waldo County, Maine General, Maine Medical Center, Pembay, Midcoast, constant Zoom meetings. Everybody was doing stuff a little different. It was new to everybody, so they was changing stuff constantly. I was getting emails and memos every day. I would just tell my crew one thing, and then it would be changed, sometimes before the end of the day. So that's what we dealt with. I was very pleased the public came out, and we had people dropping off N ninety-five masks. We had people making, in the homes, were making cloth masks for us. And people are really good about helping out, and it got us over that hump until we could start getting things in from the national stockpile. So it's been an experience. We still are geared up for it, and we all saw about the wedding in Millinocket and what happened, so. It's easy, because we haven't had a lot of it around here to let your guard down, but we have to be very careful that we don't. Because we don't know, you know, Fort Kent had, two-thirds of their ALS crew were out a few weeks ago, because one person exposed a whole crew. So, so we're still being very vigilant. They are at the hospitals. I have to say, I'm getting tired of dressing up with gowns and face shields and masks every time we go on a call, but that's what we have to do, and it will be that way for the foreseeable future. So basically, that's how we've been dealing. My crew has been really good. Most of our people work for multiple agencies, so usually in Lincoln County, so CLC, Booth Bay, and Wisconsin. We all try to get on the same page, where we share employees on what our expectations were, and that has seemed to work pretty good. We've had to help each other out more with mutual aid calls, and CLC, Warren has helped us, Union has helped us. By the same token, we've been helping them, and basically, even though Jefferson, Friendship, and Waldeboro are our basic towns that we cover first, but we've been to Warren Union, Washington, Appleton, Cushing, Newcastle, Nobobero, Bremen, Amescada, Bristol, and South Bristol, as well as they've been here into Waldeboro to help us. Part of that was reason is Maine EMS, but in a protocol, Miles Hospital does not keep COVID patients. There is a rule. Maine Medical Center has one whole section set up, so we had to set up special to transfer people. So we tried to use like one ambulance from CLC, one here, because of the cleaning afterwards, you know, the truck is. Once we get to a hospital with a COVID patient, or we transfer one, we have to leave the truck, open all the doors, leave it open for a half an hour, spray everything down, leave it open for a half an hour. And then come, once we get back here, then we have to go through the cleaning process again. I did buy intercoms for the ambulances, because I, and I'm just doing this now. We had plastic up. Now I'm putting Plexiglas taped in with duct tape between the drivers, between the driver's compartment and the patient compartment, so that that exposure risk is there. But we had to put intercoms in, because we're always talking back and forth, and we couldn't hear each other. So we're in the process of doing that now. As far as staffing, we're all in the same boat. EMS people are hard to find right now. August, July and August has always had, especially with the younger EMS workers. They like to go boating. They like to do their things, so they call out of shifts. I've had some weeks where I've just had to pick up shifts. I've had over a hundred and twenty hours some weeks. Just being, not just being here, but being on call as well from home. And Mike Poli has, Derek Booker, we got a, we got a core group. Can you excuse me just one second? Hello? Yep. Okay. All right, thanks. I'm in, I'm in a meeting right now. I'll call you back. Yep. Yep. Sorry, my bow was broke down, and he was getting, needed to get towed in, but he's all set. It's one of my sons. The, so as far as staffing, we've all been struggling to fill shifts, not just here. Booth Bay has, Tamascotta. And what Union this year is putting full-time staff. If I say it's a full-time per diem staff on, Warren has. And so one of the things that we're going to have to address in the future, two things, is wages and space, because everybody is outpacing us right now, because we're all vying for the same people. And so there, it's almost like a, I shouldn't call it a bidding war, but we're falling behind again with wages. And our space, as far as sleeping space, is, and I know the architects are working, and hopefully, they can come up with a good solution that won't be too costly. But they have, everywhere else has, you know, everybody's, they have nice bedrooms, they have nice space, and we just don't have, we don't have that here. And so that does hinder us some. So it's just some of those things that, if, once we decide what direction we're going to take here, that they may need to be addressed, or they will need to be addressed. And finally, I picked three topics. I could go on with six or seven, but I picked three for tonight. At the end of the year, and these are un-audited figures, but I just want to give you a rough idea where EMS came in. On our revenues, we had budgeted gross revenues of $680,000 roughly. And we came in and grossed at about $678,000. So we was like $1,700 off on our revenues. That's gross revenues. On the net, what I mean by net is, once we paid for the bill and service, and there's a couple of other things that came out of there, it was around $648,000. So we missed our budget by about $32,000, which is much better than last year. But it's on the expense side, we used 95.22% of our budget. So we had $38,800 left over, so, from our budget. And say, these are un-audited figures. This is just what I get at the end of the year. And so I think it was around $31,000. The difference, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong thing. Anyway, the difference between the two is like $6,800 roughly. So we come out, between our revenues and expenses, we come out about $6,800 to the good, is what I'm trying to say.
And considering there was COVID, that's great.
Well, compared to previous years, it's amazing.
Yeah, absolutely. We did get $18,000 from the government on that first lot of money. We applied for the second group of money. And I don't know if anybody got any from the second package. But we did apply for it, and I've checked with some others, and nobody's had much luck with that. So, but we did receive $18,000 from them. We are using the collection agency now, and they are up and running. We get monthly reports. Their first financial resources is the name of the company. And Peg and Julie has worked with me on this to get that set up and get it going. And tonight, you've got a document coming later on, a new business. Basically, what we did is we simplified the collections policy, the billing and collections policy. And just made it simple. It covers everything we need to cover. And so when you look at that tonight, I think, you know, I'm in agreement with it, if you folks are in favor of signing it.
Does anybody have any objections to moving this right up, so while we have Richard right here?
Just one suggestion. I think it's a great policy. I really like the way you've set it up. It's simple. It works well. Only suggestion is, and I've discussed this with Julie, that at the end, who determines whether a bill is to be written off? I think we ought to assign that responsibility to you and Peg. So that we have, we've really named the people that we're going to decide whether it's to be written off or not.
Should it be listed as the EMS director and the treasurer?
I'd say it's finance director and the EMS director.
Versus?
Yeah. We'll write it off as a bad debt at their discretion. It's a great policy.
We've had three come in, I think, in the last couple of months, of people with hardship waivers. And as you guys know, the Philbrook Fund, I also sent one to the town of Warren and to their general assistants. And I don't know if we got that one in or not. I talked with the town manager in Warren. Told her I was sending it over, and I thought they should be obligated to pay it, so. I haven't checked with Peg to see if we did get that in.
So is that the only thing? Is it okay to discuss this right now, you guys? Is everybody all fine with that?
I'd make a motion if you're entertaining that we approve the policy, subject to that revision that we discussed about making the EMS director and the finance director responsible for writing off, decisions to write off bad debt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion on it? Here or none? All those in favor? Do you want to vote on the whole, the whole, the document as a whole? Would that be?
My motion was to accept documents, subject to that amendment. I think we're good.
Yep, cool. Good enough.
And sorry I missed your last meeting, but I was with the Friendship Slum, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have internship programs with EMS?
What do you mean by internship?
Well, do you have people going to college to study EMS? Do they, can they intern with you to ride along and to show them the ropes?
We have, because of insurance reasons, we have agreements with Eastern Maine, what do they call them? Technical College, Southern Maine.
EMCC, SMCC.
Yeah.
CMCC.
Canterbury Valley.
Yep.
And Lewiston, the, I just had one the other day. I'm sorry, I'm tired.
SMCC.
Yeah, that's Paulon. But we have one, I won't call it Delta, but anyway, the ambulance service in Lewiston, they have their own training center. And so we have contracts with all these people. And actually, these students like to come to Waldeboro, because they see a lot of stuff here. What they see in the cities, basically, we have a lot of stuff here in Waldeboro. And where we do about 1,700 calls a year, usually they get to do, and we have basic students, advanced students, and paramedic students. And it's just starting up again. They had closed it down. And we just had, actually, today, we had our first paramedic student that was here with us today.
And it was really interesting, because they were sitting in the kitchen here, and the student with Derek Booker and Andrew Santisson, and they were working out things for flows on something. And I was just in there doing my dishes, and I heard them talking. And they were, it was nice to see our paramedics being so helpful to the student.
So you do have that option to have people come in and help you?
They don't so much help us, is, because we have to send, they don't give us another person, because we have to send somebody with them. Because we have to tutor them while they're here, so.
So they don't ride along with you?
They ride along with us. And they can do, we sit back and let them do, we watch them, observe them, do what they can do up to their license level that they're trained for.
Okay.
Bob?
One other question about Jefferson and Friendship. How do you feel about the relative contributions that they are making to our overall effort? Is it sufficient, or should we be talking to them about perhaps increasing the support, or?
Friendship, as you know, got the whole separate formula.
Right.
And that usually works, because it, what we don't get from insurance money, there's an offset there. But what we get for insurance, so if we get more insurance money from Friendship, the town pays less. If we get less insurance money, for whatever reason, then the town pays more. As you went up with Jefferson with me last year, that's a whole different scenario. But they did pony up and agreed to pay considerably more money. And I think it's a discussion that we need to have. You know, I know one of their concerns, are we going to keep going up and up and up and on and on? But this business costs money.
It does.
And of course, this year has been extremely unusual, and we really weren't prepared for it.
Yep. Thank you.
Does anybody else get any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Your throat's feeling better, Richard.
It doesn't hurt. They're treating it now, trying to do it non-invasively. And if that doesn't work, then no, I don't want to know what they're going to do.
Thank you, Richard. Adjustments to the agenda. Has anybody got any? See anybody red flagging it? So, citizens' comments, do we have any?
Nope.
Nope.
Where's Ruben? He's in the chat. He just had a question earlier regarding the hail wives, but Julie answered that already.
Okay.
That is already committed. Good.
Slideboard comments. Katie?
I do. Julie, I know you've talked about this so many times. And I hate to bring it up again, but I'm still getting questions about the opening of the town office. Now, I've told these people, it is open, but only through appointment only. They don't seem to understand why can't it be open like the other towns are open, where you could just walk through the door, no appointments. Can you?
I can. More than happy to, because a lot of times, we're getting compared to Nobleboro and Friendship. Nobleboro and Friendship do not have the sheer volume we do. We register trucks. We do the full gamut. Some of these towns don't do what we do. Specifically, the appointments are for the new registrations. We can do curbside for renewals, everything else. Everything else in the office is functional. We're running out of the side door, though, so that if somebody's there for their appointment, and there's two people standing there, we don't have a space issue. Come September 1st, when Marcus is in the office, he can sort of be that gatekeeper. And it's been very hard, because of budget cuts, with no gatekeeper, to keep people from overcrowding, let's put it that way. Our other issue is, people don't read. They don't listen. They don't read. They don't want to hear it. I get a lot of angry folks. I want to come in there. Well, what do you need done? Well, I need to do this. Okay, we can come to the side door. I think they feel it's their right to be able to walk into the office, and it is. But what they don't realize is, I had a gentleman who said, "Well, then you line everybody up at nine o'clock in the morning, and it's 20 people, and if that's all you can do, that's it." But if we did it that way, people are taking their day off. What we're finding is, most people like the appointment, some people don't. So especially with taxes being due, you can leave it in the red box, or you'll be able to come in so far. But you're still going to be limited. I just don't think people realize, we're the largest town in Lincoln County. We do over 17,000 transactions through that window a year. So you take all those months that you couldn't, and it wasn't our doing. And that's what everybody has to understand. People decided to not register their vehicles. People put off, if they bought a vehicle new in March, they waited till the last possible moment. And that's what, if people have been coming in, then I get the people who say, "Well, I just bought my car. I should be able to do it right away." But we're, there's only so much we can do, and there's only so many vehicles we can register in a day. And there's just, it's a sheer volume issue.
Somebody did point out that Freeport was open.
Freeport, Freeport has many more employees than we do. So, again, that's what, another thing that comes. Some towns have not made budget cuts. We made budget cuts. So we lost, literally. We lost two people, two full-time employees in that office. We also went from 40-hour week to a 32-hour week, so we lost a whole day. Rose does the new registration. She's also the tax collector. So 30-day notices had to go out. You know, it's, and when you try to explain it to people, they get very unhappy about it. But I think part of the issue of what people are seeing is, life goes on, but they don't realize how much everybody else has had to pick up. Jody quitting was not ideal, but we've picked up that slack. But that also means, somebody asked me, "Well, you know, you just need to hire another clerk." Well, hiring a clerk sounds easy, but, so everybody's aware, she wouldn't have been helping with the vehicles anyway, because we had to put out 1,000 absentee ballots. As of Monday, I had 58 requests, first thing in the morning, for the absentee ballots. You can call now for an absentee ballot. So the clerk isn't going to be able to register vehicles, because we're going to be dealing with, probably putting out, I'm guessing, of the 400 absentee ballots we have had requested, since they were able to be requested, I'm going to say half of them have never had absentees before. So that's going to be very interesting. So I think we're going to double from 1,000 ballots sent out to 2,000.
I understand all this.
Oh, I know. I'm just letting, I'm, right.
I just wanted the public to understand.
And I put it on Facebook, and I, and it's all over, but. And, you know, the one thing I will say is, I think my staff has been incredibly good with people. Sometimes people don't like the answer. There are people, though, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold this back. We're good up until the curse words start. And I just, I feel very strongly that once you curse at us, you lose your ability to have a conversation. And how we've handled that has been, "I'm going to hang up now," because that's inappropriate.
Yep. That's understood.
And it's hard, you know? On a happy note, though, we put out, and we're changing things, and we're learning things, too. Clamming licenses this year. Tanny did an excellent job. That was something that she never thought she'd have to touch, but she was touching clamming licenses. We set up in here. They had their own entrance. Same thing with taxes. We even were talking about putting a bank window in, in Peg's office, you know, just that drawer that slides in and out. So people could just drive by, and we could service them. I don't know if you have any interest in that, but it's about an $800 drawer. But that might, that might be something that we want to consider.
Just one more question.
Yes.
Are you all set up for an absentee ballot box for people to drop off, instead of mailing in?
We had, at the last, the last week of the primary election, before the primary election, we had the red box. That red box replaced the Santa box. It's actually attached. That's approved by the state. And we are apparently being touted up at the Secretary of State's office, because I've gotten calls from about five different towns about our box.
So it is just a ballot box, or is it part of anything?
It has a lock on it, and only somebody who's deputized, so me, well, we have a deputy Palooza, so all of us can go in. It's locked.
Is it only a ballot box?
No, you can use it for anything.
Do we have a ballot box just for ballots?
To drop off? It's locked, yes.
It's a locked box.
Is it the same thing that's out front?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to use that for ballots?
Yes. You're going to be able to drop it off. We don't want people getting too confused about what. It's, dropping it off isn't the problem. It's who takes it out. You have to have, you have to be a deputy to touch it. So, all of us are, and only certain people have a key to open up that box.
Again, I'm doing this for the public.
I'm going to get to my whole spiel on absentee in my report, so. It's coming.
I guess I didn't get your report.
Well, because it's new. It's new. But I just thought I needed to get it out there, because between Monday and Tuesday, there's been a whole bunch of questions.
Okay. That's it for me.
Bob?
Three things. One is that I did register online for an absentee ballot, and it works seamlessly. And I got a confirmation from the town of Waldeboro within a day of filling out my application online. And I'll get a confirmation. I guess I'll get the ballot the first week of October. Is that when you're planning on mailing out?
Correct. That's when the state, the state told us not to expect them before the first week of October.
Yep. So it works really well. The next two things are- The next two things are really reminders, and they're both related to fundraising. It's been very difficult for nonprofits to fundraise during COVID. And two organizations in town that I'm close to, one is the Waldo, and one is the library, are now doing fundraising. It's just a reminder to folks to please respond, if they have a desire to do so, to the requests they've made for assistance and help for their programs.
That's it?
Yeah.
Colonel? Thank you.
I only have one thing, that I attended the Zoom Maine Municipal Association's rookie orientation. And I passed. That's all I have.
Jen?
Well, I agree with Bob, I did it online, and I did it, I think, around suppertime. And I had my confirmation before I went to bed.
Because I have no life.
Right. And it's like, oh my word, somebody is sitting on her computer. Right.
I work from home, even at night.
Yeah, yeah, that was, I was surprised and pleased. I did that for the primary, too, and it was slick. It worked, it came in the mail, I did it, I got to really, that was a long one, so I really had got to peruse and think about that before I brought, and I brought it back in. I hand-delivered it myself, so I felt fine with that. And one of the things I forgot last time, there were two things I forgot, and I've remembered one of them, so that's not bad. I was really pleased to have LCTV on Channel 7 again. I was doing my, and there it was. And so I was really pleased to see that, because there are some interesting things on there that I like to watch. So that was good. Then I read the Lincoln County News and read that our own Jan Griesenbrock is on the board of that. So how nice, nice. And so you let them come to Waldeboro and promote us, all our good things here. The other thing, it was in the late spring, when I was driving through town in the morning, and I just looked around and said, this is the most beautiful spot on earth. Wouldn't everybody, why wouldn't anybody want to live in this town? The grass was that spring green, the flowers had just come out, and it was just beautiful and delightful. And I was so pleased to live here, and thought, who wouldn't want to live here? So recently, I've been walking in town, and around up Main Street and down towards Sylvania, and up around the big block. And one day, when I was in town, I looked at our beautiful curvings, granite curvings, and there were weeds coming all out. And the buildings downtown, between the building and the sidewalk, weeds were growing out. And there was stuff on the sidewalk, and I was going into the drugstore. So I mentioned that to Jan Mary, I said, wow, what's happened? And she said, I don't know, I have to go out there and sweep a few times a day and pick up after people. Anyway, so I, and it took me back to that late spring day, and what's happened since then. So I also walked the sidewalk on Jefferson Street, and at one point, you couldn't get through. You had to go out on the road because shrubs and, you know, from private homes and all were out there. And, you know, and I thought that, well, this is curbside appeal. When you want to sell your house, you clean up the outside, you clean up the entry, if you want people to come and move here. Well, that's the same for us, and I thought, we want businesses here. And I think we need to clean up our curbside, do something with our curbside appeal. I remember years ago, Teddy Worcester and I used to keep the downtown, the one side of downtown, clean. I did the curbside weeds, I pulled them, and he pulled the ones between the building and the sidewalk. So we had a little system going there, and so we, I walked that way, I was up there twice a day, so I was easy enough, and I was young enough to bend over and do all of that sort of thing. Teddy can no longer do the buildings, you know, take care of those weeds. And I'm close to, no, I can, I can bend over, I can't always get back. So then I was thinking, well, what can we do? And I remembered years ago, and Bob, you might remember this, there was a downtown committee?
Yep.
It was called the Downtown Work Committee or Downtown Committee, I don't.
Downtown Working Group.
Okay, yeah, that was it. And I remember one day watching them, and they were having fun, and I enjoyed watching them. They were putting up window boxes, and that's where those window boxes came that are downtown. They built them, they put them up, and planted. I don't know if they planted them or if the businesses did, but what a difference it made. It just made everything look so lovely. And now, if you see the drugstore, if you drive, just drive by, those bright pink tunas are just beautiful. And that really adds something to our town, I think. So it's one of those, it's one of those things that's low cost, high effect, a change. Doesn't cost much. We don't have, I don't think we have the money to hire people to clean things up and make it beautiful. But, but we have people, and we may have some volunteers. And the effect is, the effect is amazing. You know, if we want people to come, if we want businesses to come to town, I think we need to sell it by making it look nice. So I was hoping that maybe some of those folks who are on that downtown working group might be listening, or, or some others who might want to volunteer. And I would be happy to do what I can do, to sit down and talk with people, or to go down and pull out weeds, or see what needs to be done, just talk about that. So if people give a little bit of time and a little bit of sweat, it won't cost the town anything. So anyway, that's what I was thinking of. So if, if any people are listening, or if you know of anybody who's willing to give time, it's not a lot of time, wouldn't take that much time to clean things up. You know, particularly, it's more fun when you're with others. I hope people will step up, and if you're interested, you can give me a call. My number is easy, it's 4774, palindrome, same both ways. So if you're interested, give me a call, or, or just make yourself known. So thank you.
Moving right along, Town Management Report.
Okay, so we have been inundated with phone calls about absentee voting. So there is a difference between absentee voting and mail-in, mail, vote by mail. Absentee voting in Maine, you have to request us to send you a ballot. You can do it one of three ways. You can use the Secretary of State's website, which I highly recommend. You'll get a email response quickly. I set myself up for failure since I got yours so quickly, back to you. But it works great, we print it out, you get an email that we've received it. Two, you can call us on the phone, we like talking to you, so call us on the phone. Three, it can be written, a written application, there are questions you have to answer. So, and we do check, if you're not registered, you'll get an email if you're not registered. And once we get that application, the state sends, this time, the state is saying, we will not get the absentee ballots before the first week in October. Once we get them, we send them out. It has a barcode, we put a barcode on the inside envelope that you're going to return it to. It is scanned when it goes out, so that's how we know we sent it and you've got it. And then we scan it when it comes back in. It's always kept under locking key, everything's kept in the locked vault. So I am very confident, I should mention this, too. We are blessed to have a great United States Postal Service group of individuals that work there, here in Waldeboro. When we deliver the ballots, they go right to the counter, it's put right into the post office boxes, or the rural carriers get it right away and sort it, and it goes out the very next day. It doesn't go anywhere unless we're mailing it out of Waldeboro. So we are very, very lucky that we have such a good group down there at the post office. I feel very confident in our system. One of the things that is happening is, everybody, every organization seems, and I don't care what side of the fence you're on, I'm an equal opportunity, you know, offender and critiquer. Two things happened, Senator Collins sent out something for absentee voting. Some people are unhappy, and I got a lot of phone calls today about this, because it says, return to Julie Kaiser, 1600 Atlantic Avenue. It doesn't say town clerk. So some people were like, why are you sending me this? It didn't come from the town office, it didn't come from me personally. It was Senator Collins sending it out to the her constituents. And if you do mail it back to us, 1600 Atlantic Avenue, I don't know where it's going to go, because we're P.O. Box J and always have been. The other thing is, other organizations have mailed out voter registration cards. It's confusing a lot of people who think they're no longer registered and they were taken off the rolls. So we're dealing, aside with everything else we have to deal with, lots of phone calls about, am I registered to vote? And absentee questions that it's sort of created its own problems for at least our office. So if you voted in the primary, nobody's taken your voter registration card away from you. You're still registered to vote, but people are getting very confused with the sheer amount and number of these things that are coming in their mail. So just, if you have a question, I'd rather talk to you in person than have you worry about it. So it's not a problem to call us, so please do. Any questions you have about voting concerns, please call the office, we're more than happy to talk to you. So that's my spiel on the whole voting process. And we are going to be here on Election Day for voting in person. So if you don't want to use an absentee ballot, you're more than welcome to come to the polling place.
The state ballot will be made available during the first week of October.
Yes.
There will be some referendum issues, we think, on the part of the town that will also be included in that ballot?
Yeah, well, not on the same ballot.
That's what the question is.
Right. So the ballot is the state ballot.
Right.
For us to put out the questions we want to put out, it's about $3,500. So what we're going to do is, our questions will be on a separate sheet of paper, probably in a pretty color, and those will be hand-counted afterwards, because it's nothing we need to know the answer to right away. And we're not going to run that through the machine. That was the other problem, is if we do have lines, we're going to have two machines where you can just run that single ballot right through, for the presidential and state elections.
But is there a timing issue here in terms of the local questions?
Well, we would have to have the public hearing for that the last, at the last meeting in September.
September, okay.
So that's why it's on the agenda tonight, to talk about those questions.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's, I, oh, and I'm hoping that the website will go live by Thursday at 4:00. I hope you all looked at it, if you have any corrections. Bob was so kind and got back to me with things, and we hopefully addressed most of them.
It's a nice website, Julie.
It's a very nice website. We just got into today, setting up the e-notify, so that we can just talk to people. And so everybody was emailing me in the office, just to make sure the functionality was there. We did find one little glitch we just have to fix, and it's an email server issue. But it is going to be, we're going to be able to send out notifications to people with a touch of a button that we haven't had before. So it's kind of exciting.
Is it helpful, with the old website, you used to, I guess you'd become a subscriber, and when announcements were set out, because you were on the email list, you got the announcements?
That hasn't worked in years.
Okay, but.
But this one, you will. And you're going to be able to choose what you want to be notified about. So if you want to know when the agendas go up, an email will be sent to you. And you can choose email or text.
But you do need to sign up for that.
Oh, it's all, yeah, it's all going to be signed up for.
All right, cool. Consent calendar, somebody would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Is there a second? Is there any correspondence, Jane?
I don't have any.
Okay, I see an envelope there, so.
But that was from last, another time.
Okay.
Good eye.
Hearing none, all is in paper? Let's see, there's no new business, and we'll move on to the personnel policy.
So just a couple of changes in the personnel policy. Some of them were just little typographical changes. A couple of things that have changed. One is our working hours, so our standard work week and overtime compensation is the title of it. Obviously, we needed to accommodate for the fact that our hours may change. And I put that pursuant to the approval of the select board as necessary.
What page do you want, Steve?
Six. Mine says eight, I'm not sure what yours says.
About 6.5.
It's 6.5.
Okay.
But that's already incorporated in your copy.
Yep.
6.5, 655, that pretty much talks about, you now have to have direct deposit for all the employees. We no longer do checks. We, 8.2, in elective training, we changed, we took out a whole list of employees and just put employee, because it depends. Some seasonal employees may need training, it all depends on what's going on. We added to nine health insurance participants. Participants also receive life insurance coverage equal to one times their annual salary, at no cost to the town employee, that just comes with the package, but that wasn't in our original policy. We also made a change to 9.4, and this will begin in, on 7/1/2021. And that's more about the conditions for cash in lieu of health insurance. And that, that's a small change, and it's for budget purposes, so that we know how we're budgeting in advance. 10.2, we just cleaned up some language about jury duty leave. In 10, we added Maine earned employee leave, that is a law, so we had to, we had to change that. We are waiting on that law, the Maine Earned Leave Act, I can't say act for some reason. Per diems, we're waiting about per diems on how the Department of Labor is going to classify them. But we did put the language that we had in there. I just want to remind everybody that we no longer have Indigenous Peoples' Day off, we have Christmas Eve off. We traded that during the last round of the personnel policy. 12.3, we put in regular employees may accrue vacation. And we also included, at the end, when we had adopted this back before, amendment procedure, we did not want, we did not, it never had in it where it had to be announced in the local papers 10 days prior to taking any action on the personnel policy. So we did amend that, so that amendments to the manual will be posted 10 days prior to amendment or action being taken. But that's more, that's an internal posting, that's not a public posting. And the effective date of the manual will now be, so I will post this 10 days. So at the next meeting, it will be the effective date, because you'll act on it then. And you also got a copy of a pandemic policy that everybody seems to be adopting. It's a boilerplate policy. I'm not taking any credit or hits on how it's written or constructed, but that is the policy that everybody seems to be adopting. If you feel like we need to adopt to that, we can. I thought we did really well with how we handled it internally. We may want to craft a policy that's more suitable to us and not use a boilerplate, but that's, I wanted you to see what's out there. I'm not making it part of the personnel policy, it probably should be a standalone policy. So I'm interested in the feedback on any of that.
Homework?
Homework.
Homework, homework, Bob.
Got it.
Or Jen?
Gotcha.
But, so does anybody have any comments or questions about the personnel policy? Or would you like, are you good with it? Some of it we can change, some of it we can't, you know, that Maine earned sick leave was just interesting.
So you want us to approve this at the next?
At the next, I'm going to post it, as long as there's no changes to it.
So that'd be one of the items for the next agenda?
Yeah.
Anybody get any questions?
Oh, I have one, just in that vein. Because it's been such a screwy year, normally people have to have used their vacation time with the change. Just so you're aware, I have allowed people to carry their vacation over for another year. There's just. There's just, it's very difficult, especially with our crunch time in the office with going down to thirty-two hours. It's very difficult if one of us is out. So I did allow, just so you know, people to carry their vacation over into the next year. It just seemed like the right thing to do. Especially with us being so shorthanded.
We all set with the personnel policy?
I just had a question on the carryover. Will that be in effect for, until we're out of COVID and we've completed a fiscal year? Or is this going to be something that's permanent?
Well, I, I would say it's just because of this. Typically, you use it or you lose it. There's, there's, there's a, I just, I feel strongly that given the circumstances, because we're not going to be out of this, to the force, my, like, three months down the road, we're probably still going to be doing this. So it would be really, it would be great to just give people the opportunity to carry that time.
So the carryover would end effective the last day of the fiscal year 2022? Am I understanding that right?
Technically, 2021. So it would be six, it'll be ending six thirty twenty one.
Twenty one, all right.
But, again, who knows where we'll be then? But at least they, because I don't want to take anybody's time away because it's not their fault they can't use it. You know, and Rose brought that up and I totally agree. But I just want to, for transparency's sake, I just want to make sure.
Anybody else got any questions? We'll vote on that the next meeting. Friendship Street School?
I did not have a chance to get that completed. I know, it's terrible. We were actually talking, our last, my last email from Friendship Street Head Start was the one thing I had thought about, which was the grass mowing. So I just have to have a conversation with John Degel about that. They would be happy if we would still mow the grass there.
So should we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Contract with Northeast Municipal Advisors?
So I don't know if everybody had a chance since the last meeting when Richard was here to discuss or look this over, but I wanted to gauge your thoughts on moving ahead with having Richard do his thing and find out whether we have a bond rating and whether we should sell this way. He did send an email out, Wooderville just sold, I think it was Wooderville, at one point, three four.
Three four.
Yep. So I do think this is a good way to go. I don't think we can do anything until after November because what, hopefully some of these questions that we're going to put will give us guidance on how our public feels about funding some things. But I, so one question will definitely be on the local ballot is refinancing our existing debt. So that's a no-brainer, I would think, if we could go from where we are to one point three four or even if it was two. So I think that's a no-brainer, but I would like to give him the heads up and enter into the contract as he explained at the meeting. If it doesn't go through, it's no harm, no foul.
Right. I will go ahead with a letter and authorize Julie to negotiate the fine points with Richard and move it forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? And discussed, local questions for November third?
So this isn't really a local question for November third, but I had included in my town manager's report what you wanted on the tax bill. So I was going over the tax bill today with, because we're ready to print, with Daryl, and something came to my attention. And it got me going pretty good. Without state revenue sharing aid to education and homestead exemption, without state revenue sharing, comma, aid to education and homestead exemption, your tax bill would have been so much percent higher. So I asked Daryl an innocent question. How do you calculate what that is? And he's like, it's based on what they say we're going to get for revenue sharing. Well, they say we're going to get six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of revenue sharing. They've told the school they're going to get their full vote. I can't in good conscience put that on a tax bill because we don't know what we're going to get. So I did some research. So I called up to the state and nobody really gave me an answer. And I was not happy. So then I called the MMA and I had a lovely conversation with Kate. And Kate said, I'm not allowed to put on there when pigs fly. But she said, I could put a disclaimer potentially on there because we don't know what we're going to get. So we know what we're going to get for this first quarter, but we don't know what the rest is. So do you guys have a problem if I word that differently? Because I, I really feel if we put that on there, we're being disingenuous. I do, because we just don't know what we're going to get for revenue. So, and it has to be on there. That was one of the things. And Kate said to me, you're going to have to have the legislature change that. So I wasn't going to go there today and start making phone calls, but I, you know, I just think that we have to rephrase that. So I would appreciate any thoughts that you come up with tonight or tomorrow because we'll probably send this stuff out Thursday. And I just wanted to know if there was any other thoughts you had about how you might want this worded or any other words. I know somebody had given me the suggestion of Town of Waldeboro. It looks like it's a Town of Waldeboro tax bill and it is. Somebody had suggested we put Town of Waldeboro, RSU forty, and Lincoln County tax bill. I don't know if you want to do that. That way people know what's in the tax bill. What I've been told is that people see the current billing distribution, but you don't really notice it. But up here, you just think it's the town. I, I think people know, but it's just to make sure people understand it's not just us. So I don't know how anybody feels about that, if you have anything exciting, any thoughts? And on the back of it is where I was going to put like a little letter to the town, just saying, here's where we're at, here's what, here's what we did with the budget. Here's where we are for this year and the steps we've taken to help with your tax rate. Because I do think on the back of the bill, or even if we put a separate two-sided letter when we stuff the bills, we could still send it for the same amount. And I don't know if that letter you'd like to come from you, the select board, me, the town manager, if maybe each of you wanted to write, and this is a, something I've done in my past. With the tax bills, when we would send them out in my prior life in another place, we would write, the select board would write, each select board member would write a little blurb, and then the town manager would, would write something. So something for you to think about if you can just let me know what you, how you would like to do it. I think it's nice if you guys each take the little blurb and write something. So, and I'd like to write something just to let people know, hey, hey, here's what we did. Here's the plan going forward for some of the things that you can conduct business in the town office. And that might be a way for me to explain, this is why we're not open because every taxpayer is then getting one of these or more.
Anybody have any suggestions?
I like the idea of putting something in with the tax bill to explain where we are and how we got here.
I think the title should be...
And I like the title idea too.
I do.
Yeah.
Because it's not just the Town of Waldeboro.
No, that's right.
Yeah, I like that.
And it's a county too. I mean, you know, it's not, it's not just one, right. It's, it's, I just think that way because, and actually it was a resident. It was actually, well, a couple of residents pointed it out to me. And I, it was an interesting way to look at it. I've never looked at it like that before.
What does that tax bill have on it?
Town of Waldeboro.
Yeah, but I mean, what, does it, does it go through what the RSU?
Yeah, it's right here, does, down there.
Down there. That's what I thought it did.
Yeah, current billing distribution. But what they're saying is when you see this, this is what you see, first thing. That's the first thing you see.
And they'd probably almost look at the percentages if it was at the top of the paper and say, oh, wow, where's my tax, my counter. I don't pay attention to the percentages, very seldom.
It's the school, the town and the county.
Yeah.
Schools, county.
So it would still say Town of Waldeboro, RSU forty, and?
Lincoln County.
Lincoln County. It's just a way to remind people you're not just paying, because I think that's part of what some of this anger is, is they think it's just us or they forget. And, and that could be it, but it's just, it's just a different way of looking at it. But I really felt strongly about the whole revenue sharing, aid to education and homestead exemption.
Have you thought of some words for that on that line?
I haven't, I haven't had enough time.
Yeah.
I, I, because I wanted to make sure, I want to follow the law and disclose that, but I want to be honest with the people who are, because we don't know what we're getting as far as, as revenue sharing. And I was going to talk to Steve about that today and Steve and I normally have our four o'clock phone call, but I was doing a marriage license today for a happy young couple that couldn't wait to get married. So I missed his call. So that's, I'll, I'll play around with this and I will send you all a copy of this tomorrow. And then, do you guys have any thoughts on whether you'd feel comfortable just maybe each of you doing a paragraph?
You need it by Thursday?
Oh, gosh, no, it's going to the printers Thursday.
Oh, okay.
We're not going to stuff for, you have two weeks probably to write something.
And that would be a separate document anyway.
Yeah, well, my only issue is if I put it on the back of here, people might think it's, oh, it's just the letter and throw away their tax bill. So I might put it on a separate brightly colored neon green piece of paper that just says, hi, you know, Jan, you might want to talk about, Colonel, I'm sorry. You might want to talk about being new and all your expectations and, and something that's near and dear to your hearts and happiness, goodness in light. And I'll be the one that says, well, here's what's really going on.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Sure. So next is our discussion, which is what this is really about, is the local questions for the November third ballot. So the first thing, obviously, we talked about, which would be the refinancing of our existing debt, which I think is very important. And I think, to me, that's a no-brainer. And what we can do, and I did check on this, is that can be, that would be a binding question. So a yes or no, that commits us, that's what we would need to proceed with the sale of the bonds. When we get into discussing what the amount would be or what a recreation piece would be, so that would be, and we don't know what that cost is, so they, that would be an estimated cost. And I spoke with a member of the recreation committee and one of their pieces on this too was, so there's the cost to build it and then there's the cost to operate it. And somehow we have to, and I tasked Marcus with coming up with some questions for that. One is, I think the first question has to be, would you be willing? And, and almost we have to ask it as an approval, which would be a binding question because we'd need to know at that time if you're putting money in for that building, it has to be a yes or no question. And then, so the first two questions would be binding. And we have, but after that, you could get into what types of recreation do you want to see in it? And maybe if they vote no on it, I don't know if you want to have, I think it would be too confusing almost to have, what's, I'd love to be able to gauge people's, what are they willing to pay for recreation? And the answer, because I think if you put a number out there, like say three million, they might just say no. But maybe two million was their number.
What if you put multiple, multiple answers to?
I can ask, I, I'll have to consult with our attorney.
Say, are you willing to spend two, three or five or ten million for a building? Are you willing to spend that much?
You know.
Is that unrealistic? They could choose one.
Yep.
What they're willing to spend to.
Choose one. That's, okay, I hadn't even thought about it like that, okay. I will find out if we can do that.
And if it goes with the hospital or the medical arts facility?
Right, but we're not building that.
No, no.
But right. You know, and it's, it's such a hard question.
If that's a, if that's a binding question and you get a plurality for one of the amounts but no majority, what do you do?
Well, that's the thing is, it would be, if it's a binding question, they would have to choose one. And then that would, you'd be, technically, you could, you could sell bonds based on that.
But if you give them three or four choices?
Highest number wins?
It's the winner, highest number wins.
It's the highest number.
I got to make sure we do it like that.
It doesn't have to be a majority though.
It's a plurality would.
It's a plurality.
Right, yes, yes.
I have to, I have to check that. But I hadn't thought about doing it like that, but yeah, that, that, that actually, that makes a lot of sense to me. Whether it makes legal sense is a whole nother question.
Well, they know how that impacts their taxes or?
We can figure that out. I don't know though.
That's what a lot of people will be.
But I don't, what I don't know is if, can we include that in the question? Can we give that information out in the question? Or does that have to be part of our pre-election information? Because I'm assuming we're going to have information sessions on this, which obviously we will, but, or is that, can it be actually on the question itself? Can we, do you feel, you know, if we spend two million dollars and it affects your tax rate by, the average home by X amount? I don't know if that's allowed in the question. I'll have to find out.
That's something I think people will...
That's why I wanted to have this conversation now because I don't want to wait and then have it while we're sitting here.
In that, in that aspect, that could be spread out over ten years, twenty years?
A building, he said that night, I think it was twenty to twenty-five years.
So I mean, your tax bill might not be as bad as, you know, it may go twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty dollars versus fifty or a hundred dollars a year.
Yeah. But we also have to realize too, that's going to, because we're going to have a standalone bill, there's cleaning of that building, then there's people there to staff it. You're not, then you're not looking at just a one-person recreation department. You're looking at a multiple-person recreation department. And I know that Marcus is going to start working on that with Troy, who's on our recreation committee and, and the entire committee. But Troy has experience with that, so I think it'll be very helpful for Marcus to have him. So that's where we are with that. And I know that Max?
Has got questions?
Will have questions of some binding questions too, if you wanted to enlighten the select board.
Step right up, jump in.
So the land use committee has been very hard at work getting a revised ordinance ready. And based on the meeting we had last night, we actually are looking to possibly having this on November warrant. Now, this, we are going to have one more meeting, I think the week after Labor Day. And then that's just going to be a, a three-hour read-through of the revised, hopefully, final draft. And then we're going to have the planning board meet on the sixteenth to do a public hearing. And then we'll hopefully have it all ready for you guys by the twenty-fourth, I think, is the night you're talking about warrants. So all said and good, we'll have two questions that need to go on the ba, on the warrant. The first is the approval for the entire revised draft ordinance. And then the second question is for the creation of the floodplain ordinance. Now, in our current land use ordinance, we have Article eight, I believe, and that is talking about properties that are in a floodplain zone. What we want to do is take that out and create its own ordinance. It's a simple copy paste. We're not changing anything with it, we're just having it out on its own. And the reason we want to do that is because we don't really amend it, but the state or the federal government may amend it quite often. And we don't really want to repeat a situation like we had with the shoreline ordinance where the state of Maine updated it, I think in 2015. And then we waited until maybe four years later, just before it was forced on us to make those changes. We kind of want to have them separate so that we can adjust it as it's amended by the state and federal government. So we want to have those two questions primarily. There is a third question that I don't know how much we wanted, how much you want on this local ballot, but it would just be to expand the historical village to include AD gray. It's something that I would like to get done, just while we're all talking about it, but it's not a top priority item. It's something that likely could just wait until July if we have too many. It's something that likely could just wait until July if we have too many items on the local ballot anyways.
It's one sheet of paper. We can make it a legal-sized piece, you know.
And it would just be AD gray, by the way. It would just be that one parcel, not the field, not Philbrook, just AD gray.
Do you have any other non-binding questions that you might just like to? Because I do think that we have this amazing opportunity where there's gonna be a huge turnout, and people will, you know, especially with the, what we, a lot of the comments I got from the people who voted absentee during the primary were, it was nice to be able to have the time to read through the four pages. So people will have time to read. So we have a captive audience if we want to ask, you know, non-binding questions just to gauge the pulse of the community.
If you're looking for non-binding questions, I wouldn't mind asking what people's thoughts are with having, with proceeding with the Volunteers of America proposal for AD gray. I know that some people have been asking me quite a bit about that project, and some people have some questions about it. And I would rather see what the people think now, if they're fine with the concept, if they're fine with the idea of senior housing in that neighborhood. Because I don't wanna wait until maybe July or November of next year, when we might be doing something more serious at that time, only to be told that people don't support it and we can't sell it. I don't wanna really waste my time and Volunteers of America's time if the community doesn't support it. And if it's non-binding, then it's non-binding.
I like that idea.
I just have a question that just popped into my head when you were talking. Do you know offhand what the population of Waldeboro is? What the over-65 population of Waldeboro is, what percentage?
Over-65 or the population in general?
The over-65 population. Maine is about 20% population over-65. Are we, are we?
I have the computer right over there, so I can probably find it once I sit down.
Well, that's good information to know if you're looking for a senior.
Right. I mean, I think the only other item I'm thinking of is the Mayor Juan ordinance. The committee has been working on it very hard. I don't think it'll be ready for the November warrants, but that might happen. Who knows, I could be in for a shock.
Does anybody else have any non-binding ones?
I just had a comment to make on the historic district issue, and this came up during our conversation at the subcommittee meeting.
Just very quickly, before you get into that, I wanna clarify, that's just our local ordinance for the historic village. I'm not talking about the national thing.
Got it. So, if we, the question is, do you, you're only talking about the school and not other possible districts within the town. But if you declare the building itself as part of the historic district, then we couldn't take it down. Am I right?
Are we talking about the local ordinance, or are we talking?
They're talking about the local one.
Local, no.
Okay, but if it becomes a federal, if you make it part of the registry?
Correct.
Then it can't be touched.
Correct. Because locally, what we have in our ordinance is saying that if you're building anything, if you're doing any type of architectural changes, it needs to meet that.
Historical criteria.
Historical criteria.
Local historical criteria.
Well, it fits into a 19th-century architectural standard. That's, I believe that's what the exact wording is. So someone, if someone wanted to tear down AD gray and build something new, that's fine. But it better look like it was here 100 or 2 ago, so. But you're correct, once we go nationally, then it can't be torn down because the federal government specifically gives tax credits for rehabilitation projects, just to.
Right, so we just wanna make sure that if you're getting the sense of the community on this issue, it's clearly defined as a local district and not something that fits into the federal or state.
Well, that one wouldn't be a non-binding issue, that would be.
Right, it would be non-binding, but.
No, it would be binding, because we're changing our zoning ordinance to allow AD gray to be in the Waldeboro Historic Village District, which changes its density requirements, allowed uses, setbacks, things like that.
I think you need to have a hearing on that, we will anyway, I'm sure, but.
That one, the floodplain management and the ordinance changes will all be done during the planning board meeting on the 16th.
Okay.
Assuming the planning board members are all fine with that. And if anyone does wanna talk about it, we hope to have our draft ready before Labor Day weekend, so. And I'll make sure everyone gets a digital copy and physical if you request it. Because I do wanna make sure we have everything ready so we can be on the November warrant. But I think the changes we have to the ordinance are more about allowing more uses and correcting a lot of irregularities in the current ordinance. Looking at some new uses that have been popping up in town regionally, like food trucks, more renewable energy projects, agricultural tourism. You know, really wanna get as many, get as much land we can so that those can prosper. And just looking at some, like, some references that don't exist and some very horrible grammatical and punctuation errors that left maybe 10 minutes of confusion with some committee members. So, that's it, that's all I had.
Anybody get anything that they would like to have on there?
The only other thing is something we'll be meeting about at the end of the month.
Right.
And I think we would entertain at that point whether you wanna put it in.
And I think, too, one of the other things would be, we should ask the public if there's something that they feel strongly about, if there's members of the public out there that have ideas that we don't have of what should we be asking the voters, and that would be, now's an excellent time.
Have we had any comments, Max?
Just Ruben. He asked, are there any IT components of that building that need review? I just told him if the voters approved it in the starting design, there would be.
We all good, Max?
Yep, and Jan, just to answer your question, this is based on the United States Census.gov website, and it's July 1st, 2019 estimate, of a population of 5,075. It's estimated that 24% are 65 or older.
Good, that's a significant number.
Mm-hmm.
At least 1,200.
Yeah.
Cool.
So I'll come up, I'll find out the answers to these questions, we'll put them together. We'll have this meeting, this next meeting, to really firm them up and then have the hearing on.
The 22nd.
Is it the 22nd?
September 22nd.
September 22nd, just the, time is just gonna buy so quick.
Is it too soon to raise the question regarding the medical arts, proposed medical arts concept?
We could, we could, about what people think about that.
Yeah.
And I might come up with some more, just.
Yeah. I mean, we just have, we have this golden opportunity, so I think we should take advantage of it while we have it. And you don't get that often. We'll have to wait another four years.
Yeah.
You all set?
Me? I'm a, yes, I'm, I think I'm good.
Does anybody have anything for the next agenda? We've already got a couple that will be taken care of.
Yeah, personnel policy and Friendship Street School lease.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
So far. Does anybody else have anything?
Are we, did we table the Friendship Street School?
Yeah.
We're just gonna move it, we're gonna discuss it next meeting.
Discuss it at the next meeting.
She didn't have enough time to.
I, yeah, I just framed problems, I guess.
Well, I guess, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Cool, just like that.